Let us begin by, I'd like to begin by asking any board members if they have any questions left over from, can't hear me? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm so soft spoken.
Yes, she is.
If only. I've always soft spoken. I'm going to begin by asking if any board members have any questions left over from Tuesday's workshop before we begin tonight. Dave?
Yes, I have a question. So, I have a question on behalf of Ms. Cipriano who couldn't be here tonight. She wanted me to ask revisiting the student athletic insurance if there was any documentation of any of the payouts that the board could be provided in regards to the student insurance.
So, any of the payments that are made to families are made directly from the insurance company. I am able to get claims reports, but I'm not sure that that, I mean, I could probably get total dollar claims, but I'm not comfortable sharing, obviously, information in regards to student names and injuries and claims made.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Does that answer the question that you want?
Yes, I believe.
Any other board members with questions? I also want to thank all those that are here this evening. We appreciate your presence. We're going to begin on page 45, our special education. No, I'm sorry. Yeah?
Yep.
This is 45. Pretty good. So, looking at page 45, any board members have any questions? We also did get a printout from Sheri that we can look over also and see if there are any questions on that, on the FTA allocation by school.
Mrs. Carmody?
The estimated costs benefit.
Can I add something to that? Just for purposes of clarification, there, so there are two documents that you're provided with, and one is simply the allocation by school.
Okay.
Right, as you can see, and those are FTEs, and if anyone has questions on those, we will do our best to answer those. The second is the estimated costs of those specialized programs. That's what this refers to. Remember, we had that discussion about the fact that we do have some in-district programs, and of course, the programs themselves, there's a cost to that, but if we did not have those programs, we'd have about 41 students we would have to outplace, and there was a total of about $5.3 million that would be tuition for the school year, for extended school year, and for transportation, you know, on average. So, it goes back, it goes back to that, and we said what we would do is put together some information about what it costs to actually run the in-district programs. So, there are two, two points here to make with this particular printout, and Mrs. D'Ello, correct me if I'm wrong. One is that this doesn't just refer to the 41 students we were talking about, there are other students in those programs. So, we would still run those programs, we would still run these programs, but having these programs prevents the outplacement, hence the tuition dollars that we were talking about. So, there's not a direct, you know, one-to-one correspondence between the cost of running these programs and that $5.3 million. That's one thing. Two, on the left-hand column where it says CLP, which is a collaborative learning program, and I know in your other documentation, you have all the definitions for the acronyms, that's at the high school. That number's not actually four FTEs. That was a mistake on our part, which I didn't catch, and I apologize. We have four teachers there, each, because it's at the high school, it's on an eight-period day, there are five teaching periods, so we have three individuals each teaching a period, and we have one person teaching two periods, so this is actually 1.0, and consequently, that cost would be about a quarter, and, you know, the salary would be about a quarter to a fifth of what it is. Yeah, so that's high. So, we'll make that adjustment and then, you know, and get that to you. That was the only adjustment for that particular score.
It's 1.0 rather than the four?
Correct. Correct.
Not that I remember what CLP stands for.
Collaborative Learning Program? Collaborative Learning Program.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of not understanding, I was going to ask Mr. Madancy, before we get into the special ed, on Tuesday night, we were having a discussion on specialist, math and literacy specialists, and we talked about SR.
SRBI.
Right, and I, you know, we use that, those letters all the time. I think it would be worthwhile to take a moment to explain, since this is being televised this evening, what SRBI is and why we use it, okay?
Sure. So, SRBI in short is an acronym for scientific research-based instruction. Connecticut being as Connecticut is, wants to be unique, and really, what it's called nationally is RTI, or Response to Intervention. And the process for that and the mandate was from the state in 2006, when they redefined how we identify students to qualify for special education services. The old model was a dual discrepancy model, but a lot of that had to do with IQ versus achievement. So, you remember, the school psychologists would issue a test, they'd look at report cards, and if there was discrepancy or test scores, they would, you know, identify a student. Now, the dual discrepancy is the student's response to intervention against the growth of their peers, so when we're providing intervention services, how are they growing compared to, commensurate with their peers, and also the response to the intervention that's being provided, so is their growth with these services, so as not to falsely identify students before intervening appropriately, which is where the specialists come in when we talk about things like Tier 2 and Tier 3, providing those supports to see if they might just have gaps in learning, whether it was a teacher that missed a lot of time on a given year for a crisis, that it was, it was an instructional issue, whether it's a student maybe who was transient and moved from school to school and missed, if the curriculum wasn't in the same order, maybe missed instruction in certain academic areas, if the student themselves was in crisis at some point and missed large periods of time. There's a lot of things that could lead to a child not performing well academically beyond just having a learning disability, and SRBI was meant to tease that out prior to prematurely identifying students. With that being said, it goes back to the, why we call it Response to Intervention, I mean, although Connecticut has its own little name for it, nationally, we call it RTI, Response to Intervention, that's really essentially what it, what the purpose of that program is for. If students are responding to the intervention, we cannot qualify them for special education services. So, it is a regular ed initiative, you know, in terms of where it lives and the funding that's associated with it, it's not funded through special education funds, and because of that, it's very important that we have regular ed staff, which are specialists, providing those interventions to students, so that if we can intervene appropriately prior to them being prematurely identified, we're required to do so.
Well, thank you, because that has come up, and we wanted to, just to make certain that everyone understood what that was. Thank you very much. Getting back to page 45, do I have any questions from any board members on the special education summary? I guess we can go to page 48.
About 47.
Yes, 47 comes before 48.
So, you do, you do know math?
I'm doing it, hang on. Page 47, excuse me. Questions on page 47? Anyone?
I just have one question.
Sure, what number?
So, well, it was out-of-town transportation number 83335.
Mm-hmm.
There's a $120,000 uptick on that, and I'm just curious, is that related to strain on the system, or?
It's a, it's a projection based on the renewal of our contract with New Britain Transportation, and also the number of buses we're running for out-of-town, for students attending schools out of town.
And those are outplaced students in the special education?
Correct. They are, the dollars for out-of-town transportation are added along with the out-of-district tuition amounts when we submit the total cost per student to the state, and that's part of the excess cost grant reimbursement. We apply the excess cost funds that come back to the tuition account, but we show the transportation cost is gross.
Also, is that McKinney-Vento students? They fall under this? I know that many of them are regular ed, students who are homeless under the McKinney-Vento Act. If they're displaced from living in Southington, and let's say they're in Bristol, we are the district, they're our students, so we are responsible to get them to and from their school, to have some stability in their lives, and those invoices come through our office. So, is that, it's under special ed, correct?
Depending on the student, some of them might be under regular education tuition, because they're, they're, regular education transportation, because we're transporting them to regular programming.
Okay.
No questions, Joe?
It's okay.
My second question was the one below that, 83336, the travel for instruction. There's a $3,500 increase there.
Yes, that is specifically because within the special education budget, we are requesting an additional van for our program housed at Stellar, and also to, well, not just for the students at Stellar, in addition to Stellar, we're looking for a van to assist the students in our transition program from ages 18 to 21, and so we've added additional cost for, for that travel, it's essentially for gas and maintenance for that vehicle, if you were to approve that. So, we have added funds in this document for, under page 49, for a wheelchair accessible van, and we're looking to lease the van over four years. And our thought process in regards to requesting the lease is that our existing van is quite old, and if we could get the money in to start a four-year lease now, at the conclusion of those four years, we'd be in a position to have the funds in our budget to start a new lease to replace the existing van that we received through donations from the community, is how we got the original van for the special education program.
Not wheelchair accessible.
But it's currently that. The van that we have now is not wheelchair accessible.
Right, right. No, I understood that, it was just, so the six, that $3,500 increase reflects then money that we're putting aside?
For gas, if we were to get the vehicle, we need to go through the appropriate inspections for transport, for student, for vehicles that are transporting students, there's a lot of requirements for that, and in addition, it would be the maintenance and gas for that vehicle.
Okay, which we're not currently paying on the?
We're paying for one van, but we would assume that the dollar amount would double if we now have two vehicles servicing our special education.
We're not automatically gonna retire out the old?
No, we, we feel that we are in a need to have two vans for the number of students we're currently servicing.
Okay.
Any other questions on page 47, by anyone?
Mrs. Carmody, can we just point one thing out? It's just a recurring, we talked about municipal employees retirement system prior to, and this has a significant impact here, would you like to address that, Mrs. D'Ello?
Sure. So, on Tuesday, I provided a lengthy description and analysis, really, of why we now are showing a two-year increase within our budget for MERS, and when we talked about that, I shared that part of that increase is under the regular education benefit section, and part of that increase is here under the special education section. So, and if you'll recall, that's because the increase for the current year is currently sitting as a separate line item under the town budget on the page for the Board of Education. So, we did that in our first-page summary of our budget to outline that dollar amount.
All right, thank you. On page 48, any questions on page 48? I see no hands, am I correct? 49, a special education equipment summary and special programs. Very fortunate to have so many of these things in our school system, very proud of it. On page 50, the rationale for all of our programs in special education, which we all have to learn all the acronyms, I think we all will be tested on that at some point.
As long as Ms. Walsh is kind enough to share the acronyms with us.
Yes, she has, shared them.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for that.
Have you learned them all, Mrs. Clark?
No.
I didn't think so.
Thank you. Did you?
No.
Okay.
I'm trying, though. Any questions on the special education program expansion? We had a presentation two weeks ago by our coordinators, which was extremely well-done, explaining to us all of the things that our special ed department is, departments are doing, and we are very, very proud of all that we do in our school system, to make certain that we are not only concerned with the academic well-being of our students, but we are also looking at the emotional, social, and mental well-being of our students, and I think it's wonderful. Yes, Mr. D'Onowski, did I miss something that you wanted?
Yes, on 49, the system-wide special ed equipment, the student DM system, there's four of those Model 2 Roger X touchscreen mics. Is that for new students coming in, or is this replacement, or?
I don't know.
I'd be happy to explain that, but I know that Mrs. Skroski could do it much more justice than I can, so if you wouldn't mind if I ask her to explain how we were previously renting a lot of those, and why it makes sense for us to actually purchase some of those based on the age of the students right now.
So, Mrs. Skroski, you didn't know you're gonna be called upon.
Hi.
Walk into the room, and you bear the risk. Thank you.
Actually, Mrs. D'Ello explained it. We work with Krec Soundbridge to have consult for children who have the need for audiological equipment to access their education, it's an accommodation, so these children have hearing impairment or they're deaf, and so we have children come our way on a regular basis, and so if they come mid-year, we'll sometimes rent, because we haven't accounted for their need in the budget, and then we work with Krec Soundbridge to work on gaining new equipment as we phase out the rental, because it ends up paying in returns once we own it, and we can reuse it for other children if the child moves, or the equipment becomes obsolete. With hearing aids, they change the, they upgrade the companies that make them, and so we have to meet those needs as well. So, we work to have two-year plans to phase in new equipment as needed to replace the rentals or old equipment.
So, do we have children already in the system that we would need this equipment for?
That's correct. We're only planning for existing children.
For existing children, okay.
So, we don't have, we won't have these until, you know, the next budget year?
Correct.
Which is after July 1. How are we handling those children right now?
They, they would have a rental, rental for their equipment.
So, we're renting, we are currently renting a number of these units, but looking at the specific students and the age, because I know some of them can keep them for a number of years, but then they outgrow them and they need to be replaced, and so as they looked at how long this current students would need them, and which ones could have the specific ones that if we bought, it would be cheaper to buy them this instrument than leasing it for them, or renting it for the next five or six years.
Do we, do you know, I don't need that right now, but could you get us the cost of what the rental or the lease is?
Be happy to do that.
Any other questions on that, Mr. D'Onowski?
No, no, that was fine.
Thank you, Mrs. Skroski. Any other questions on 49? I think we had gone to 50. Questions? Page 51, gives us the current growth of our Southington school system on school year, did you want to speak to any of that, anyone, or?
Absolutely. As you heard in the presentation at the Board of Education meeting back in December, we have had significant growth in our population of students who are identified as somewhere on the autism spectrum. The increase since the 2013-2014 school year to, through last year was 36.6%. So, it's a significant number of students for us who have some very, very specific needs. And when our coordinators provided the, the presentation on the continuum of services, I thought it would be helpful for the board to see what we were doing in district, and then we provided the additional information on, on the costs. So, our in-district programs that we've developed, especially over the course of the last five years or so, have been really cost-effective. It's what's best for students, educating our students in districts so that they have the opportunity to be educated with their peers, neighborhood, you saw what just happened with our marching band, and a student who has special needs, and that connection between and among, between and among students. So, the, the program expansion that the special education department is recommending to us is to try to do something similar to what we've done with our other in-district programs. In other words, provide something in district for specific needs, do that, keep our students with us, so we do not have to send them out of district in order to meet their needs. Now, as I've, as I've said before, special education, you know, education is expensive. Special education is expensive, and the state certainly has not lived up to its promise, we know that, to reimburse us our excess cost grant reimbursement is not what it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be 100% of the excess cost, and it's not. The federal commitment was supposed to be, and pardon me for the redundancy, it's supposed to be 40% of the excess cost of special education, and it's never risen above 11%. So, we know those things are probably not gonna change, and Ms. Walsh and her staff have been very creative in terms of creating programs in-house that would allow us to continue to do the right thing for our students, and do it in the most cost-effective manner that we possibly can. So, that's where the, the recommendation for this program expansion comes in. Now, one, one thing to note, and I know we're not on that page yet, and you just asked me the question about the number of, the number of students, but if we do flip to the next page, which is 52, I believe, you can see the total cost in terms of that program, and we're just calling it a program expansion at this point in time, no one's come up with a clever acronym yet. Correct, Ms. Walsh? Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Another one tomorrow.
So, you can see the cost. Now, that provides flexibility for students that would be entering the program in the future as well. If we don't expand this program to meet the needs of the students for the next school year, if you look down just below that, we still have to add staff, we still have to have personnel to do it. So, just for the next year, we are looking at about a $230,000, $231,000 cost in personnel just to meet the needs of the students we know, whereas if we expand the program and create a program, and that cost, as you see, there's about $357,000, we'll have the flexibility so that in, in future years, we'll still be able to meet the needs of students as they, as they come in. Is that, was that fair, Meg, to say?
And could I just add one more point to that, is that with the new personnel, if we didn't expand the program, and we had to go ahead and hire the additional new personnel to service the students we have in district right now, the classrooms would be maxed. So, one additional student that came in that needs to go into one of those classrooms, we would not have the room for, and we would have to outplace. The coordinators have been working with the students, they've looked at every which way that without that additional classroom, there's no doubt that one more coming into the district, we would be looking at an outplacement.
And I do, I do want to take a minute to compliment our coordinators as well, because especially with our youngest students, it's very, very, very difficult to project. We're required to provide services from the day the student turns three forward, through the time that they're 21, if, if need be. Most of our, our students graduate, and the 18 to 21 program is for a much smaller number of students, but we're required from age three. We don't always get the information on students who are turning three, and they turn three at different times during the course of the year. So, we have students entering our program literally throughout the course of the school year, and it's put a bit of a strain on our, on our, on our preschool program, quite frankly. And I think our staff are, are doing a tremendous job right now, meeting the needs of the students that we have, but our numbers increase over the school year, as I said, and sometimes it's very difficult to project that. So, our coordinators do a great job in getting information from families, you know, from the community, but sometimes we just don't have the names of all the students. Now, in the quote-unquote "old days," when birth of three was a much, much stronger program, that's, that's a state-operated program, we had good relationships with birth of three, which we still do, we have good relationships, but there was much more communication, and we had the, we had the ability really to have the, the names of students, so we had a much better handle on, on numbers, if you will. So, it's, it's challenging, it's really very, very challenging, and the continued growth in terms of the number of students who have significant needs is something that is not only Southington, we're experiencing it, but we're experiencing that statewide, quite frankly.
Any questions on that? Yes, Mr. D'Onowski?
You know, 36.6% increase over this time period, I think, is shocking, if anything. Is there any way that we can find out how other districts in our DIRG, and see what, you know, what their identified numbers are, so we can make some point of a comparison?
Sure, we can absolutely do that.
Joe?
So, just out of curiosity, the bottom of page 51, out-of-district placements for students with specialized needs can range across from $80,000, $81,000 to $188,000 per student per year. Do we have that sort of same, I guess, range, if you will, for students that we, in service, to sort of demonstrate what that, like, real-time cost savings is, or?
Well, so, that's what we, that's what we tried to do when we were putting together the dollar amounts for our, for our in-district programs, and as I said, we do, we do need to make, you know, an adjustment there. It's, these figures are actually a little easier to get, because you're, you're essentially looking at what's the tuition cost from program X, Y, Z, you know, et cetera, and that's where we came up with $130,000 average. Folks put all of those costs together and, you know, and arrived at an average for it. In district, we, we can work on that, we can do a little bit more work, if you will, and take the total number of students that we have in the in-district programs, and cost that out, and get a, and get a per pupil on that. It's going to be considerably less than $187,000.
Well, I know that, but is it like closer to $80,000 per student, or?
I don't know, but we, we'll, we can work on that, we can get you that information.
And then my, my other question, how, do we know roughly how many students are enrolled in the special education services in town currently in district?
Yes, as, so that was something that I, that was in one of the documents that we, we sent earlier, all together, including students who are being serviced in district, including students who are in out-of-district placements, and including students who are in magnet schools who have IEPs, we're also responsible for them, there's over 1,000 students. We've got about 930 students in district, and then we have an additional 40 who are in out-of-district placements. And while I say that, another point about our in-district programming, this is my sixth year, when I first came on board, we were in the 60s, we had, I think we had a high of maybe 66 or 68 students who were in out-of-district placements, and we're at 41 right now. So, that's a, I think we've done a very, very good job of keeping, keeping our kids home, that provides high-quality services for them, that we can monitor better, and it also saves, saves the community dollars in addition to that.
And when you, when you look at these numbers, and then if you've ever gone into the classrooms, and many of us have, at Hatton School and different schools, it's unbelievable what our teachers and our coordinators are doing, should be very, very proud, it's very, very expensive. You know, Mr. D'Onowski asked to look at the comparison of people in our DIRG, I would have to assume they're going to be as high as us. I, 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 that would be my assumption. I don't, no, Meg, you would be more, you know, more accurately than I do, but I would think they'd be up there also.
So, there's been an, an increase in students?
So there's been an, um, an increase in students, um, identified on the spectrum or having needs that fall under, um, students with autism spectrum disorder. Um, and it's, it's a national phenomenon and there's all the research, why and so on and so forth, but, uh, it's not just, um, you know, a Southington issue, but we can get you the numbers for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? So are, do we have any general special education questions? We have our coordinators here, our administrators. Anyone else have anything they want to ask? Uh, Joe?
Now, my, my other question, how, how many students actually move out of the special ed program into, I guess, re- regular education, you know, at, at what kind of rate and, you know, do we have a percentage that we roughly work, work off of?
I don't, I don't know that we, do we, we don't actually collect that.
Well, we can get numbers for students who have been exited from special ed or from a more restrictive environment to least restrictive. For example, we had several students who were in the Lids primary program at Kelly, which is a K-one-two program for students with significant emotional behavioral issues. And, um, we've had three or four students return to their neighborhood schools in the last two years. And, and they're still in special ed, but they're receiving support services and maybe some resource instructional time. Um, and some may require one-to-one, some may not, but they're learning the skills they need in those programs to be able to be successful in a least restrictive environment. So we can get you some of that data. Um, in terms of exiting altogether, we certainly can get that from the CDAC report, how many students have been exited out of special ed because they've met the criteria.
Right.
You know, you don't just exit because you're doing better. If there's criteria, we have to follow. Yeah, for the statute.
I understand that. But again, like, you know, I, I think it's important, you know, for myself to understand as well as I know a lot of, um, folks in the public that, again, we're saving money, but to sort of see those statistics, if you will, to actually see how effective, um, the special education is being, um, I guess, executed in, in district. I think that would be an important thing to look at, you know, as we're looking for a pretty substantial increase in the budget, so.
Yeah, and I can, I can not, with all due respect though, if a student has a disability, they're going to have it for life. Do you know what I mean? It doesn't go away. So we try to support them in engaging and learning and to decrease their hours and their times, they're more independent, so that when they, you know, exit high school or, um, go into the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old program, they can be independent contributing, you know, adults who participate in recreational leisure activities. So I can get to the numbers, but, um, the disability is still there. It's just that they don't do that level of service anymore.
So, you know, then I guess my, my other follow-up question to that then, so like emotional issues and things like that, does that fall within the special education?
Yes, it does.
So how, again, like emotional issues, I think, are a little bit different than, say, like, found, um...
Dyslexia.
Dyslexia, things like that, you know, so I'm, that's, I guess, more of the, what I'm looking to do. Some, someone with, say, anxiety or something like that, you know, do they, how, how's our program? Can we actually measure that those kids are improving? Or do they sort of stay labeled throughout the system and then, you know, there's no movement for them? They just sort of, we, we treat them exactly the same K through twelve? I guess that's, that's my question. It's a little convoluted, but...
Yeah, can I answer that? It's, there are two things there really. One is whether a student continues to qualify for special education services and those, and that's by criteria. And if a student continues to qualify, they continue to qualify regardless of the category, if you will. Every year, the individual education plan is evaluated by the planning and placement team, which parents are a part. And there are goals and objectives that were set out for that particular year and there's an analysis completed, an assessment of whether the student has met those objectives or how close the student has come to meeting those objectives, uh, and whether they've achieved the, the goal, so to speak. Then there's a new set of goals and objectives that are, that are developed for the student. And the, the hope is always that everything that we do as a, as a school community helps that student obtain those goals, you know, from year to year. So they're, they're always going to be a little different. And one of the things that Ms. Walsh alluded to is that as students get older, that you're trying to put the student in a position where they become less dependent on those support services so they can do more. They might still have an individual education program, but that might look very different than it did, say, when they were in third grade or fourth, or fourth grade. It's, uh, and as students get older, gaining independence, being able to do things independently, being able to advocate for themselves, uh, and some of those other transition-related goals become much more, much more important for them. So it's real, it, it's incredible. It's really individualized and it, it's, it's quite a process when you think we have, you know, a thousand students essentially. Every single year, we're reviewing a thousand individual education plans for students and determining the level of growth and then re-examining what those goals and objectives might be. That's what our staff spend a, a good deal of time doing, especially in, especially in the spring as you get towards the end of the school year and then planning for the placement for that student for the following year.
How do we keep track of, like, as students meet their goals and things like that? You know, I, I know we keep track of it, but like, is there a certain percentage that, you know, say sixty percent of those students, seventy-five percent of those students, they're able to progress to new sets of goals and things like that? Or is, is there anything that we could sort of, again, I, I guess the, the thing that I get hung up with, with this budget and at least a lot of the feedback that I get is, you know, people see a lot of, a lot of our dollars go towards special education. It's important and, you know, there's, there's no question about that. It's just a matter of trying to show people that we do it very well here in town and being able to, I guess, come, come up with, not a statisti, I, I hate to say statistics. Like, I, I want to show the effectiveness of what we're offering here as far as, ju-just the same way that our cost per, uh, per pupil stays low and we continue to deliver very good, uh, education. You know, can we sort of do that with, with our special education dollars as well? I don't know, maybe, maybe we can't. I guess, you know, maybe it's because of the profound...
So it's a good question. I, I don't know if we have a vehicle in place where we do that.
No, I know.
You know, the percent of students meeting all of their IEPs?
We do have CDAC reports and we do have reports from the state, but then I think to look at goals and progression and we would ha, and looking at students, you know, making progress over time and changing those goals, they, as they continue up, um, scaffold up to meet the overall goal, uh, we'd have to individually go through every IEP, uh, you know, year to year. I don't know if that's a feasible thing to do because it's so individualized.
Right, right.
So in other words, at the end of each school year, each student with their IEP, which is their, as he explained here, okay? So it tells if they have met those goals for the year.
Right.
So, so it is evaluated?
Right.
Is that your question to see if we're evaluating?
I, I know that it's evaluated, but how do we, do we do anything to get, I know we report everything to the state of Connecticut.
Right, all of that has to be...
Do we, do we let the town know as far as like what, like, again, the Joe, Joe taxpayer? You know, again, like, people being able to get all this information out to show people that they're, you know, we're effectively using the, the funding.
Yeah, so how, how do we quantify it? Is that, is that the case?
Is, is there something that we can use or?
Yeah.
Is that something that we've ever thought of?
No, I mean, and quite honestly, we do so much reporting under the special education umbrella that, that's, I don't think that that's anything that we have thought to do. And if you look at a student's individual education plan, and I don't know if this continues to be accurate or not, Meg, but at one point in time, there are all these procedures under the IDEA, um, regulations. And at one, at one point in time, the State Department was telling us when they created the IEPs, everyone uses the same IEP, right, across the state? That there were seven-hundred-and-fifty-three points of compliance in any one individual education plan. Honestly, it, it's a lot for our staff to, to do. Of course, we're trying to provide the best programs we, we possibly can for each student and our teachers put an awful lot of that, an awful lot of themselves into it, if you will. And we're trying to stay in compliance with everything that the, you know, the state is indicating we have to stay in compliance with. So I, I don't think that we've considered that beyond the individual student, which I think is what your, what your question is, right? It's a good question though.
And I would be happy to sit with you and go through an IEP with you or, or anybody. I would offer that because it's a very complex document. And a student might have a goal that, um, you know, they learn to recognize the letter C and another student might have a goal, um, using, using a communicative device because they cannot speak. Another school child might have a toilet and goal because they don't know how to independently use the bathroom. You know, another student might have a goal to, um, be more organized with, if they have executive functioning issues, so to teach them how to be organized because their brains are not wired to be organized and so they could be all over the place. So every, every IEP is so, so individualized and it, it's not a criticism. It's taken me years to understand it and I still don't understand it the way Mr. Kellin does, but I'd be happy to, you know, go over one with you. And I think if you saw the document itself...
No, and again, like, I, I'd actually, as I'm having a little bit more time this winter, um, you know, that's, that's something I, I would like to do.
Sure.
It's, it's just, again, more to, yeah, as, as we talk about the budget, as, as we go through this, is, um, you know, we get so hung up, I think, with the having to report, again, working in healthcare. The, the, you need to hire people just to understand the differences in, um, uh, you know, healthcare law and everything else. You know, I'm sure this is very similar to that in that regard where it's so like, there's so many like over, overreaching into making sure that we're, we're doing something. It's just that we sometimes lose sight as to, you know, again, like, who are the people helping to make this happen? And again, it's the, it's the taxpayers and, you know. I, I'm, I'm just trying to think of ideas of how we can, I get asked a lot of questions that I don't necessarily know the answer to and it, it would help me to be able to give information back as to like, you know, we're effective because of X and Y.
We, we do, we do have something Mr. Medancy pointed out. If you want to speak to that, Steve?
So is, there is, uh, one matrix that our buildings will often use when they're doing analysis on how we have, we call high needs groups. And it could sometimes could be either students with disabilities, English language learners, free reduced lunch. And as part of the Next Generation Accountability Index, which is this, essentially the report card for the schools, which correlates to the report card for the district, all schools for students in the high needs group, their progress is reported out and it's a growth measure against the, the performance from the previous year. And those growth measures vary obviously by school because they didn't all perform at the same level the previous year. There's a formula the state uses to determine if you've met, um, the performance indicator, it's called, and you're awarded a certain amount of points for meeting that performance indicator. And it's what you, it's what's used as part of the formula to rate your school's performance overall as a category one, two, three, four, or five. We do not have any schools in category four or five. Uh, four would be a focus school, five would be a turnaround school. And those are schools, sometimes you may see that the state's going in and doing takeover. Many of our schools are in either category one, two, or three, but for that performance indicator, our students at every school are meeting, uh, the, the growth metric that's set year to year, which is a sign that we are programming appropriately for them because it's a very difficult metric to meet, knowing that in any school, the amount of, the, the array of disabilities can be broad and the needs of the students can be significant depending on the programs in that school or the student population in that school. So while it's not a student-by-student analysis, there is that level on a standardized measure for all students of how our students with needs are performing. There's also an alternative assessment for students that might even have more significant disabilities and progress for those students is also reported out. And if the district wasn't meeting, you know, the standard, the state would be coming in. And we've done a very good job, uh, with our students, both on the, the alternate assessment and on the, the regular assessment that all students take other than those who have needs that require the alternate assessment. So I would say that's a metric we do have. At another board meeting at some point in time, we could go over those indic, performance indicators and talk to you about what that looks like for that population. I think that would confirm to the community that we are programming appropriately for our students.
Yes, Mrs. Clark?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just following up to what Joe was talking about. I think sometimes we get, especially when you hear the title "special ed," you get hung up on what is special ed? You know, that, what i, what is it cover? What does it encompass? And it can go anywhere with children that have a processing issue that you can't see to, to a child who is severely disabled. And how do you quantify, how do you use data to determine are the dollars being spent properly? Because, yeah, you're right. It's the taxpayer that we have to pay for these children's education and they want an explanation. But sometimes I think we can't quantify. We're talking about children and what Meg was talking about, when you have an IEP for a child and the goals that are set, they are so individual for every single child. And we have, what, a thousand and three children that have IEPs? They're all different. Every last one of them, there is not one that matches up with the other one because every child is different. And our job as a district, and it sounds like we're doing it fairly well, according to the state of Connecticut, is to make sure that that child has the appropriate education for that individual child. And it's not as though we can just say, okay, here's a package and give it to this child regardless of what their disability is. We have to individualize it for all of them. And I think a lot of times, we just hear special ed, we hear it's a lot of money, but those are children and every last one of them has something different that they need. That's what we have to do. That's what Meg and the coordinators and everybody else, the teachers that are involved with special ed kids. And quite frankly, I think they do. I, I personally haven't, have dealt with them and they do a heck of a job. And they get the children to where they need for the next level in their, in their education and in their life. It's just really, really hard to quantify it. It's, 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 because there's a thousand and three of them.
Well, no, I, I understand that, but, but again, like, because it's so individualized, you know, it's, I think it's safe to assume that you meet or you don't, you know, with the particular goals. So, so again, like, I, I'm not saying that there's, needs to be a standardized test to figure out if we're doing an effective job as, you know, as we're setting these goals. How are we meeting them? You know, what are the percentages that we meet? You know, where, where do we need, I guess, more services and things like that? I, I think if, in essentially painting a more detailed picture of exactly what, what we're doing, then I, I think it makes it easier for, you know, to sort of...
These programs that we have in the, yeah.
Explain the programming and, you know, why we need X amount of money more for one particular realm, which, you know, again, I, I get this, but, um, you know, as, as far as explaining it to folks that don't want to necessarily delve into the, I guess, numbers of, of it all, you know, again, you could look at only so many spreadsheets before you become numb. You know, just, again, being able to, well, you know, seventy-five percent or eighty percent of kids meet the goals that we're setting for them and, you know, this is how we're doing and, you know, this is what, we offer great programs. There's no doubt about that. It's just more of, how do we, how do, how does everybody stay more informed about that as to like what we're actually offering here in town?
Well, I think with the, with the programs that, that are now in our budget book, I think, although, can I just say, I couldn't read some of them because I had my glasses on and the printing didn't come out?
Yeah, that's online from the, the PowerPoint that is in the budget book was actually the PowerPoint that the special education coordinators provided. Uh, we just wanted to be able to have another copy, but it is online as part of that board package.
Because I thought it was my glasses and, you know, but I didn't, don't know if I had them on. But, I mean, spelling out these programs to say what we're doing for different populations may help, may help people understand what it is we're doing. So, you know, the C, the collaborative learning, the stellar program, Lids, EAS, which I still can't remember which is which, but these are the programs, this is what we're offering for the, for students, so hopefully this helps.
Again, I, I think it's more of the glob, you could only have so many acronyms before people look at you like, you know, sideways. So, you know, again, like, I, I under, I understand the importance and that every program is different. My, what, my question, my inquiry is to, you know, how, how do we look at it in more of like a global aspect and, you know, how do we have something that's tangible, that makes sense, that we could deliver to people to, you know, help them, help them support, galvanize the support for, for every time that we ask for an increase? But that's all I'm saying. I'm not, I, I'm not saying that we're, you know, gosh, like, I don't, I'm not saying that we do a bad job or, or anything like that. It's just more of, you know, playing a little devil's advocate here, so.
And I understand...
And I understand that, and I think you do understand this, that any IEP for any student, the parents are an integral part of that planning. Am I correct?
Correct.
They have the input as well as the teacher and so. I just want to make sure everyone knows that. All right, any other special ed questions? Moving on to page 53, I think. Am I right? No, am I there? Which are the new personnel requests for special education? Any questions on that? Okay, then we can go to page 54. All explained. Missing anyone with questions? No? Did I miss someone? No? So I have no question on any of that, is that correct?
Yep, it's just the explanation.
And the rest of the pages are, this is what we have presented to us in the PowerPoint by the coordinators. Now, I would imagine we would go to major projects and equipment, which begin on page Again, they're all explained. Are there any questions?
So if I can just open up by explaining just maybe some of the new board members that major projects and equipment basically are items that are over $10,000 but under $50,000, so they don't qualify to be part of the capital improvement plan that you approved earlier this year that will be folded into the town's overall capital improvement plan. And items that are maintenance related would be in this section as well because once again, the maintenance items are not going to roll into that capital improvement plan. So that's pretty much how we determine whether or not it lands in the section of the budget. And we try to provide you a five-year plan so that you can see all of the projects that we know need to be addressed. And we've tried to determine through the administration on what was the priority to put in for the 2021 budget.
Thank you, Sherry. Questions on page 66? Yes, Ms. Clark? Mr. Darren Nelson, you were quicker than I was. You were quicker.
Just a reflex action.
Oh, okay. You go first.
Let's see, 66. At the high school, the CLP office.
The what?
The CLP. The CLP office renovation for special ed. The, currently, staff members are displaced when these confidential conversations take place. We don't have any conference rooms at the high school that can be used or?
I think they were moved. Weren't they moved to the old Voag part of the building? Yes, right?
Yes, you want to handle that, Meg?
Yes, they were moved into the space where the, it was the old Voag section and then the athletic director was in there. And so the athletic director's office is a good size. We have a clinician in there full-time and so there's other space that sometimes you need to work with students one-on-one or if parents come in to meet with one of the teachers and we don't have access to space and it's all the way in the back of the building. So there's not, we can't like go to the office if a student's in crisis, whatever. So one is for the full-time clinician to be able to meet with students in private. And right now it's a very large space and we really could maximize the space if we were to put a divider in it. And so Mr. Romano's been over there and with Mr. Peppi, we've walked through there to look at how we could make it to maximize the space, it would be a better way to put it.
You know what he was talking about down in the back where we used to have Voag, that's space down there?
Right. Just reading the rationale, they just look, they need a place for it to have a confidential discussion. And I'm just asking, are there other areas in the building that you can have a confidential discussion?
Probably not.
The, you know, up in the main office, I think, you know, we've got offices up there. I don't even know if they're even filled anymore because they moved the principal, the assistant.
But I think the school psychologist and are they all?
Can I say, yes, all those offices are filled. This is to be contiguous with that program. Remember, the collaborative learning program has become somewhat self-contained, if you will, into that particular area of the, area of the building. So that's what, it really was something that we probably should have been able to accomplish before we actually implemented the program. But the program sort of grew, as you will. We knew that we were going to need space like this because that, the clinician who works in the program literally works right in the program and is not part of the mental health suite upstairs with the counselors and social workers.
This is a new program?
It's been in the high, it's been in the high school this year. And in fact, Meg did a little presentation on that. Was that the beginning of the school year this year?
Yes, yeah, actually the teachers who instruct there. So it's self-contained because the students become so dysregulated that when they are in the moment, if you were trying to escort them through the CAF to go to the main office to have a conversation, it wouldn't be helpful, I think, for anyone. So the teachers write out, the clinician's office is right across from the classrooms. There's two classrooms that we use, two spaces, and so they can get the kids right in there and she's in the classroom as well. So we're not traveling or transitioning anywhere with the students because these children have a tendency to become dysregulated or don't have good coping skills with stress or anxiety or issues like that.
Yes, Ms. Clark? I have two questions. Question on the Pine Center. When was the last time we did any?
That was my question.
Okay. And your answer is?
No one has any idea.
Okay. It's still the original everything from?
The students deserve for us to pay better attention, quite frankly.
All right, that's question number one. Can I go to question number? Yes, you may. All right, because I would be remiss, I do this every year, because this makes me crazy every year, when I see the envelope to maintain the building envelope on the buildings, the caulking, the pointing of the bricks, the this, that. Really? We have to budget out two years in it to maintain the integrity of the buildings? I just, I just have to say, I'm waiting for some, a brick to fall out. No, no, let's, mm. It could. Mr. John, yeah.
I brought this up, I think, every year for the last 15 years.
You and I both.
It's always the same thing. Well, we'll address it when the issue comes up. This is something that could have been handled.
Mr. Romano's laughing at me in the back. Yeah, because we have these buildings, let's, and I know, Mr. Romano, you and your staff do an outstanding job. I'm not saying that, it's just that, yeah.
And I would just add, I think that his, he and his staff are working more on a preventative maintenance schedule so that when there are needs that need immediate attention, they are being addressed. And these are more, are things that would be nice to get done at some point in time, but there's not any real safety concern. And he's been doing more and more work, as you know, in-house and trying to save the district money, so.
And I thank him for his work. I just, I get concerned when I see things like this, and so I have to mention it, but... And that is absolutely no reflection on your staff, the job you do. I know that safety is your number one concern. I understand that.
So with things like that, is it something that we go out to bid or is that something that Mr. Romano?
In-house.
Sort of like, is it one of those things? I know we've gotten creative over the past couple of years as far as there's some things that we can handle, but then to the point like, okay, now we have to, I mean, we did all that cement work in front of the high school, which is tremendous cost savings because we were able to facilitate a lot of that stuff in-house, so.
I think a lot of the stuff he is doing in-house, the schools, I think, that you're specifically looking at are schools that are in the next phase potentially of renovations. So we have tried to do some repair work there versus spending dollars that may be able to be taken care of in a school renovation project where we get, you know, 52 or 54% reimbursement from the state. So that's why you'll see many of the projects at the three elementary schools that have not been renovated, we've pushed out to the 22, 23 year.
Yes, Dave?
Do we have 67 yet or we just?
Any page you want.
67. System-wide initiatives, contracted painting services. Didn't we not have a full-time painter on staff at one point?
We do. We continue to have one full-time painter for all of the buildings in the district, yes. One.
So $100,000 for painting services? We're going to subcontract that now or?
And we did a couple of years ago.
Right, we did. Can I answer that? Yeah, we do have, we have far more needs than our one, our one painter, who's tremendous, can handle. We, if you go and talk with some of our elementary teachers who've been in their classrooms for 20 or 25 years and ask them, when's the last time your classroom was painted? And they say, never. We've been trying to keep this in the budget now for the last, for the last five years. We haven't been able to do it. I think one year we were able to keep $50,000 in. And correct me if I'm wrong, we were able to get some stairwells at the high school painted, et cetera. It's an ongoing issue and what we've tried to do is establish this particular line in the budget so that we can do a little bit, a little bit every year. We'd like to go back to that, the original plan that we had when we established this about five years ago, because I think we've only knocked maybe one or two things off the list. There should be a way to look at the buildings and say, okay, we're going to do five classrooms in this building, five classrooms in that building, two hallways here. And as good as a painter as Vic is, that's just not something he can do. You can't, on this scale, we have 12 buildings. So that's why that's in there. At some point in time, we need to have a regular schedule so that we can take care, we can take better care of the investments. This is our, you know, these are our investments as a community, our facilities. And so that's what, that's what that's all about. We're just trying to, trying to do the right thing.
Do we have any work programs available at the high school for students to learn painting?
Just to look at the math though, right? So it's $100,000 and I'm not sure if I'm reading the explanation properly. It says?
What are you on, Zach?
Same issue, same item, contracted painting. And if you go to 73 under contracted painting, it's estimating 500 classrooms and it says we could do 78 classrooms a summer because you're only going to paint classrooms in the summer when the school's, school's out. I think that comes to like $1,282 a class, a room, right, for painting? Is, are they looking, are they doing anything other than the classrooms or is it just 78 classrooms that are going to make up that number?
Yeah, for example, and that probably should be revised, but yes, for the example I just gave you of the stairwells, hallways, all, everything that you see in a school building absolutely has to be addressed.
But it's not just the 70, it's not going to be $1,200 a room that's going to be painted.
It's a lot of other things.
Well, again, there are hallways, there are bathrooms, there are stairwells and classrooms. All of those things fall under that same umbrella that all have to be addressed at some point in time.
Yes, Dave?
I have a few questions regarding the visitor verification system. I know what the visitor verification system is, but would you be able to explain it to us for the record, please?
Sure. The visitor verification system, in fact, the example that I gave the board is only one. There are many vendors right now. The Raptor Tech Industries is one that I used as an example. And so it's a, it's essentially a computerized system that has a database. A visitor would come into the vestibular area, the office area, produce a picture identification such as a license, which we ask people to produce now. They would, they would insert that themselves into the machine. The machine does a very speedy, if you will, database search, would look at some of the common databases such as the sex offender database, et cetera, and stores the information, prints out an individual identification badge for that person with the information about what time they came, you know, et cetera, what time they, they were planning on being there, why they were there. It's a, it's a system that is used in a number of school districts. We implemented that in Oxford when I was there after Sandy Hook into the schools. It was pretty successful. I know it's been upgraded since. I just asked the question the other day and actually the YMCA uses that in their, in their main building now. So that's what the, that's what the visitor identification system is.
What is the procedure that we have in place currently?
Okay, there are, there are actually three types of the same thing. The elementary schools do not have an entryway. The doors are locked, there are cameras, a visitor, and it's all posted outside the buildings. Whoever that person is, whether that's a parent or someone else, comes up, they produce their photo ID, they're asked what their purpose is. We have people check on that. So if someone says, my purpose is to visit Mr. Madancy in his classroom, we check with Mr. Madancy, he says, yes. The person is buzzed into, they go into the office, they sign in, they receive a visitor pass, and then they go to their meeting with Mr. Madancy. And the middle schools, it's similar, except the middle schools have the built-in entryway. So the same thing occurs and the buzzer's on the outside, except when someone goes in, they're in between the doorways. And if necessary, they actually could be denied further access into the building. The high school does not have that. The high school actually has security attendants. So people go to the door, the security attendants open the door, let the individual in, they show them their identification, their reason for being there, and they're given a visitor pass. So the procedures are essentially the same, but they're different based on the structure of each of the buildings.
So it seems like we have a secure procedure already in place. How would this system make our school safer?
Well, there are a couple of pieces to that. One, we don't have people doing active database checks. That's one. Two, it would be more efficient in that someone would, they already have to produce their ID, put their ID into the slot, once it goes through the database. The identification tag is printed out for the person. It's specific to that person, it's individualized, they put that on, they go into their meeting or whatever, whatever it may be. So you're increasing the efficiency of operation in the front offices. And in addition to that, that visit is then logged and kept in the database. And my understanding is that the databases refresh, like at the Wyatt's, refreshed every six months, consistent with the state databases. So in case something happens and, you know, in the interim, that information would be updated.
How much training would this require?
For who?
For the secretaries in the office, whoever would be using the system.
It's a minimal amount of training, quite frankly. You know, the major thing is the setup and making sure that that's, everything is operating appropriately, but it's, it's not really much different in terms of the level of training than what we instituted when we changed those procedures several years ago. And we trained all of our office staff and they're all, they're all pretty good at it. This is just, it's a much more effective, efficient way of doing it.
So what about during, like, after-school events, sporting events? Would the system be used during those type of events? Because wouldn't there be a bigger risk for, say, an offender to enter school property at that type of event?
So actually, the answer to that question is no. If you look at the history of what, no, the, everything, the thing that everybody fears is a school shooting, correct? So when do school shootings occur? When students are there. That's the major part. We do not have that in place for after-school or for sporting events. In fact, sporting events are open to the general public. So if you go to a high school basketball game, people are coming in. Now, we do have a security attendant who is in the building during the day. And sometimes, depending on the event, like football games, you know, we have, we have police officers. So no, that's not something that would be used during those times.
So, what was I going to say? So does the system have the potential to mix up identities? So for example, if somebody... So, for example, if somebody, let's just say, a basic generic name, like John Smith, were, had a meeting with a, an administrator, and he were to give his license to the school secretaries, and then there would happen to be another John Smith who was a offender somewhere else, wouldn't he be flagged, or? No?
Reads, it reads, it reads the code off your license. So, everyone has an individual code on their, like, literally on their license, their barcode. So, it reads the individual barcode off the person's license. And all of that information, the person's name, their address, et cetera, et cetera, are all in that. And if you ever looked at the sex offender database, all that information is in there by individual, by address, et cetera, et cetera. So, I suppose it's possible. I would say no, that, that's not a mix-up that would necessarily take place, because you're reading the electronic information. You can, Mr. Medancy, go right ahead.
One other improvement to this would be, is, as our, especially in our elementary buildings, where parents may have custody arrangements, or in some cases, there are restraining orders against certain parents, that information can be entered at the local level, which it may not be in a database as a criminal offense. And very often, we have, right now, we have our office staff verifying who that visitor is, and, and checking within our student information system if there are alerts to that person. This would flag that before they even have to do that, and it would allow for a much quicker, more efficient response if we needed that.
So, my final question, would this fifty-six thousand dollar investment make our school safer? Yes or no?
Yes, otherwise, we wouldn't have put it in there. That's, that's the purpose. It's an, it's an attempt to increase school safety and security.
And safer than the procedure that we already have in place, correct?
I believe so, yes. I think we do a pretty good job right now, and the procedures that we put in place, parents have accepted. And as a matter of fact, we've had quite a few folks say, "Thank you." I think this is a way of doing it a little bit more efficiently, in a more, more effective manner.
Thank you.
Yes?
On, on the same subject, uh, just as a, for instance, if someone was to enter the school, they're in the office, give a license, and an alert comes up, that this person shouldn't be there, but he's already in the school. So, I mean, I don't know what-
Doesn't it happen at the doorway? It happens in the entrance?
Well, the, the machines are technically in the school, you know, in the office. But to answer your question, Mr. Dernowski, that could happen right now. And it, it could. What the person would do, would be to summon the administrator, their friendly local administrator, to come to the office right at that point, and say, "Just hold on a minute." And if we need to summon the Suddington Police Department, we would do so. And they've been very, very responsive. We also have panic buttons under each desk, if it was that type of a situation. We have the two-way radios, where we communicate effectively. So, in terms of actually handling a situation that emerged like that, we've anticipated that, we have had some staff training, we haven't had that come up at this point in time, but I have no doubt that our, our staff would be able to handle it in that fashion, yeah.
Can I just make one comment? I just think any mechanism that is able to identify an issue, where something happens, we have manual systems now. We have manual way of doing it. You buzz at the front door, you say, "I'm here to see whoever." If I could flag somebody, and I, I, we use these things. I do, right? So, it works. There is no method of, of confusing people. Last time I, I saw something like that was a long, long time ago, when there were, you didn't have the systems like they have now. These systems work really well, and I think any way that we could add additional to the school, we need to do. At least, that would be my perspective.
One other follow-up question, is there any maintenance to a, a system like this, or once we buy the unit, or we have the unit?
Or any labels?
Yeah, it's just the labels, and-
So, it's just more like clerical?
I'm, I'm sure there are software upgrades, which are fairly routine as well.
You know, and again, like, I, I understand what Zaya's point is, but I also understand David's point is, you know, again, like, we have a, a system in place, you know, everybody's afraid of a school shooting. Most of the school shootings were, as far as, as far as I'm aware, you know, when, when you're a minor, you don't go into any databases, everything's still, still sealed. So, I, you know, in, in that regard, you know, I, I don't know, like, if, if there's, I guess, more of the need, where you brought up the, um, certain, like, parental situations that, that need to be alerted, but, but I would imagine that those are so few and far between that they could be, or maybe I'm being naive, maybe I-
Well, I would tell you, for an elementary principal who doesn't have an assistant principal, and it's only that person and the office staff member in, when someone shows up who's not supposed to be there, it's a very stressful situation, and it can be uncomfortable, and the quicker we can get in a response. And the people are not usually there with the intent of doing violence. They're usually upset, and they want access to their child, because they missed a visitation, or because a report card wasn't sent to them, instead of, "Mom, if they're a divorced couple, and they want answers," you know, that kind of thing. But, you know, it may not have been communicated through the courts appropriately to that parent, that, you know, you're not to have contact during such and such times, like, all of those variables that come into play. That's what our office staff, you know, to be able to put that, there's systems we have in place right now, that I don't wanna necessarily go into in a public meeting, that could be improved upon if we had a system like this. That's the best way I would, could describe it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Security, and, and your point well-taken, Mr. Shanna. I think we're on page seventy-four. Did I skip something?
Nope.
No? All right. So, I guess we have gone through all of that, and then go to the, um, excuse me, appendix, which are grants and revenues. Page seventy-six.
Heaven.
Which, um, very interesting. Summary of our grant revenues. Are there any questions, comments? I have comments, but I won't say them. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, we go to page seventy-eight. This is the net current expenditures per pupil. Looking at all of the districts around us, and you certainly can find-
One fifty-three.
What?
We're one fifty-three.
I know exactly where we are. Uh, one fifty-three, which-
Add up one sixty-six.
Add up one sixty-six, yes. And I think we do a bang-up job, but anyways, any questions on that? Um, page eighty-two is our reference group. And then, the last part of the, um, budget booklet is our projected enrollment, the study that we had done. I think we've gone over this several times. I don't know if there's any questions.
This is the data that was in their report, right?
I'm sorry, what?
Correct.
Data that was in their report.
There's no changes from what we've had before in the-
No, it's the, it's the updated information from this past spring, and the point that I believe I made when I did the budget presentation initially, was that the projection for our elementary school enrollment is still increasing over the course of the next ten years. So, we're-
Elementary for the next ten years.
Elementary enrollment, correct.
Ultimately, if elementary increases, then secondary increases and high school-
Which will then go to the high school, obviously, right?
Correct. So, when you look at the, when you look at the graphs, you'll see elementary enrollment is projected, continuing to increase. Middle school does like a U-shape, so it'll go down a little bit, and then back up, and then high school will continue to drift down, but if you would extrapolate out beyond the ten years, you'll see it drift back up again, because of those increases at the elementary level.
And can I just, and, just, just something that people say, you know, "Oh, you're losing population." So, maybe one year, it dips down, but it doesn't dip down just in one school or one grade. It's across-
Across the district.
It's across the district. So, if a class size goes from, say, twenty-one in an elementary school, down to nineteen, that's two students, right? But it's across the district. So, people have this conception, "Well, you can get rid of teachers." Not really, because you still have, it's spread across. And that's something I think we lose sight of, when we say, "Our, our population may have gone down, say, a hundred students, maybe even," but it's across the district. So, it's not as though we can get rid of the school, or get rid of teachers, or get rid of anything, because it goes right across the district.
It's across thirteen grade levels.
Yeah, hello.
Essentially. But that's why the, you know, when the projections are broken out, we're looking specifically at elementary, because we, we need to engage in a discussion about what we're gonna do with our elementary schools, obviously. And we did have Mylone and McBroom focus on the elementaries in particular, but also provide the enrollment data for middle school and, and high school accordingly.
Any, yes?
My, my only question, have the projections been lining up with, like, the real data? Has it been pretty spot-on, or?
Yeah, they've been, they've been pretty good. And if you, is, I think, didn't you ask me for a copy of the report, just fairly recently, I sent to you? I think, I think that was it, yeah. It was a couple of months ago. Yeah, one of the things that Mylone and McBroom did in that, in that report, was they did, in the, at the very beginning of the report, if you look at it, they did an analysis of, you know, and some schools were up, some were down, but they were, they were, they were pretty good.
Any other questions? On page eighty-nine, we have history of budget increases. I'm not gonna read all those numbers to you, because Sheri didn't write them out for me. And I don't wanna make a mistake. Do I have any questions on that? Page ninety, budget comparisons.
That is what it is.
Questions? And the last thing on page ninety-one, this is just so well-done, is the certified and classified staffing summer.
That's a great chart.
So, I mean, all of the information is just, you know, the whole thing is well-done, as always. Is someone asking me a question that I can't hear?
No, I wouldn't do that.
Then speak up if you have something to say.
I wasn't talking to you.
Voices.
No, I was, no, I was, I was asking, what was Lincoln Tech? Like, there was a line item, and there's nothing against it, but I don't know.
Used to be-
It used to be?
In Tech.
Oh.
It used to be where selling, yeah, it used to be where the selling program is behind the Overkew's building. You have to get with it and learn things.
Yes, ma'am. Like you.
I'm learning every day. Do I have any board members with any overriding questions before we summarize? Yes, Mr. Dernowski?
I would like to go back to the regular ed portion of the video.
Sure, what page now are you gonna be on? You don't know, or just a question?
Well, no, I, actually, uh, we had a advisory board meeting this morning-
For?
-for tech, the tech ed, advisory board, technology. And we had found that some of the activities at the tech ed areas, primarily the high, well, high schools, well as middle schools, on some of the field trips that were taken to either, some of the events, there was a contract with rodeo for construction that we participated in over the years, where we've had sponsors for transportation. Well, this year, sponsorships have really dried up, so they haven't really gone, they missed the ACM, first time in ten years. What I'd like to do is either add to the line item, transportation line item thirty-three one hundred, or add a brand-new line item for, you know, between three to five thousand dollars, so that there would be funds available for these annual events for kids that are involved or interested in technology, outside the academic aspect.
And what line item was that, Dave? I didn't-
Well, uh, we don't have a line item for it, but thirty-three one hundred.
If I may, I would say, looking at account thirty-nine four fifty, on the bottom of page twenty, system-wide field trips might be the appropriate line item-
Okay.
-for what you're, what you're requesting.
We can consider that, okay, Mr. Dernowski? So, because the, because the grants have dried up, the kids cannot go on these field trips, they're-
These weren't grants, these, these are just voluntary, you know, companies that would cover, cover the cost.
Covered, and they're not doing it anymore.
There are none this year. None carryover from last year, there are none.
That's really a shame, huh?
Well, it's, you never know. It's as good as the economy is, some companies aren't doing as well as they have.
All right, any, um, overall questions on the budget? Well, our, our budget total is one hundred, one million, six hundred, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fif, four hundred forty-five dollars, an increase of three point one one percent, or three million, sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Comments? Questions?
I'm still like, consideration or consensus, if the board is looking to agree to add the five thousand dollars that I just mentioned? Or you're not entertaining that.
You know what, Dave? I don't know how I do that. I can ask for a consensus to add, you wanted to add five thousand dollars to, Sheri, you said that would go on the field trip item?
Yes. So, what traditionally has been helpful for the administration, is if somebody during the workshops makes a recommendation for an addition or subtraction to the budget, if we get a consensus, at least we have an idea of where the board members that are here stand for that, stand on that item, and then we'll provide a running total for Thursday evening, with the beginning superintendent's budget, and any recommendations that came through consensus during the workshops, because you can't actually take a vote this evening, and then we would have an adjusted total of a budget amount for you to take action on, on Thursday evening. So, if there's a consensus amongst, among the board members this evening, to add five thousand dollars to that account, thirty-nine four fifty, system-wide field trips, I will make notation of that for the opening of Thursday evening's meeting.
Could I just ask David a couple of questions?
Sure, of course.
Where are the, where are these, where are the kids, where are the children going to?
Uh, they've gone to different manufacturing companies that have allowed students to come in, where they can actually see a real manufacturing operation. When I was employed up at EDAC, one year, our company opened a door, had them come in for the day, and I forget how many students we had in total, it was close to a hundred and fifty. And we, we provided everything except transportation, and they had someone pay for the transportation for the students to be brought to the company.
Who would that someone be, that would pay for the transportation?
I don't have the names.
So, it would be like a private individual?
At one time, we had, uh, New Britain Transportation, at one point-
Donated the bus?
We donated a bus or two. But there were other companies that would pick up the four or five hundred dollars, or whatever the cost was for it.
So, how, so how many field trips were they taking? I mean, you, based on donations, or?
Um, whatever's available. I mean, the ACM has a, has one up in Hartford every year.
You're talking, you, you asked for three to five thousand?
Right. Yeah. I, I don't know the exact number that they would need.
Yes, go ahead, Steve. The timing's interesting. I, I talked to Mr. Dernowski that I wasn't gonna be at the Technology Advisory Committee meeting today. I was at a state workshop with some folks from the high school around a CTE, Career Pathways Program, and there's, uh, it's, it's, there's a lot of momentum, and kind of aligns with what, Joe, you and I have talked about before, too, and support at the state level now to assist districts in developing career pathways, and a huge component of that is job shadowing, and career education out in the field. Because somebody gave an example of, they wanted to go to school for physical therapy, it was a glorious, glamorous career, until they started working with students who, well, not students, working with patients who had significant needs, paralysis, toileting, and whatnot, and saw the not-so-happy times behind profession, and it was, it wasn't until they had gone all the way through school and realized that that wasn't a profession for them, and had accrued all that student loan debt, which we now are hearing everywhere about people taking on student loan debt, and then either changing careers or not finishing their program, because it wasn't what they decided they wanted to do. I do think if we could get a line item, or an appropriation to that line item, it would certainly boost the opportunity for us to start to work on a CTE, careers, pathway kind of program and approach at the high school, career education, if you will, where job shadowing can exist. I've been going to the Technology Advisory Meetings with Mr. Dernowski for a couple of years now, and we've been trying to find creative, innovative ways to get students out into the field. out into the field, so that, you know, when we think about our grid, our vision of a graduate, we say college career or life ready.
Right.
Right? And so we do a lot for that college readiness, but the career and life readiness is a piece that I think this would support. So I, in talking with Mr. Cornell, and I obviously would never speak out of tune without his, you know, his blessing, we agree that this, this literally came out today in terms of support and our participation in cohort, that could start to build this. I also, and you may have read the article in the Record Journal either last week or the week before, Mr. Pepe and myself had met with folks from the Chamber of Commerce, also about getting our students connected to small business, uh, and, and, and just business in general, in the community for more of that career education. I think this also could assist with that partnership, uh, which could, would, could play into the pathways approach. So, yes, this is information literally that, he's right, we don't know year to year if the grants are going to be available, they tell us at, at the time we ask. And at the same time, we're getting information now from the state that there's some, some support, um, for pathways approach and career education, that this funding, as minimal as it is, could certainly help, uh, support that without having to charge those students who are going on that trip, or who may not have the financial means to pay. And then you have essentially what you have now, the has and have not, so we don't want that for our students.
So we need a consensus of, there are six of us here tonight.
Could we start with, just, could we start with 3,000 and, you know, see how it goes? Would that be, would that cover it? I don't know. You, you don't know either.
I, I don't know what the cost of, of the transportation that's been paid in the past. All I know is that there is no funds available, that's why.
Yes, that's a good idea, maybe we could start with 3,000.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna report at the next board meeting what we discussed, uh, this morning, where Punxsus is in the process of buying a, actually, one of my former places where I was working up in Farmington, which is in their backyard. And it's going to be a 44,000 square foot manufacturing facility. That's gonna, that's actively being ready.
And we need, and these kids are going to need jobs.
With the intent of being able to bring high school students up to see firsthand, college students learning, you know, manufacturing, programming and so forth, so, but again, to get them there.
Wonderful.
Just for the board reference, you know, from the, the field trip forms and stuff that I sent off, and it's about $467 round trip for a bus. And so $500 gets you one trip. So if you do math, 3,000 gets you about six trips. That may sound like a lot, but if you're thinking of pathways, if you're talking hospitality and tourism, if you're talking manufacturing, and if you're talking construction, if you're talking business and entrepreneurship, there's, there's not a lot of, because you want to give kids who have these interests the opportunity to maybe take a visit on a career pathway trip of interest to them, that's kind of the impetus for pathways, that's not even accounting for the trips that we've already established that are longstanding. So I don't think 5,000's an unreasonable number.
So I, I'll, I'll ask for a consensus of this board, I, do I do that individually?
Nope, just start on one end, start with Dave, start with me.
I'll start with you, sir.
I don't want to add to a hundred million dollar budget, so no.
I say yes?
I say yes.
Yes.
I would have to agree with Joe, I don't want to add to a hundred million dollar budget, so I'm a no.
So that does not pass, is that correct?
Yes. So it was a 4-2 vote, so I'll, I will provide an update for the budget, I will include that, and then the full board on Thursday night.
So that we will have a different amount of money.
Take a vote on that.
Anyone have anything else to say about the total amount of money, and if, looking for any other areas that they want to cut or add?
It's a lot of money, but bottom line is, is what are we adding this year? What have we added to the, to the budget in terms of programs? Nothing.
Right?
I mean, it's not as if this is a, is a, is an expansion of the, of the programs that we're offering here in town. A lot of this is contractual, a lot of the, the driving forces, we have no control over, they're, they're in place, they're gonna do. Um, you know, as, we've said it many times, you say it every year, this is, you know, we're the Board of Education, we're supposed to put together a budget to educate the students in the town of Southington, give them the opportunities that they need. Dave, I think it's a great idea, you know, you look at the, the, the students, not everybody's going to college, not everybody should go to college. You can make a lot of money going out into the, into manufacturing, it's not what people think manufacturing is anymore. If you came to where I worked and you saw where, same with you, Dave, manufacturing facilities are beautiful these days, the high-tech manufacturing that's going on out there these days, you need a good, strong education in order to run some of these pieces of equipment, because you break a couple million dollar piece of equipment, because you program around, you're in a lot of trouble. But, but bottom line is, that's, that's something that we need to plan and prepare for. We're creating, we're starting the educational future for these students at the elementary level, middle school, and high school level. It's, it's, it's a lot of money, but boy, oh, boy, it's really not, because we're not doing much more than we've been doing. We, we should be more, we should be putting more, growing the programs, we should be expanding the programs, we should be doing, you know, a lot more, but I'm really happy that you, with the budget, the way it looks, what's in there, that we're not seeing cuts at this point, that we're educating our students to the best that they can, because we're preparing them for the future. They're the ones that are going to be leading us going forward into the future. Let's give them a good, strong, solid setting here in Southington. We, 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 I'm sorry, I forget the number, 155 out of 168?
153, 153.
153 out of 168. That's where we are in our spending per pupil, we do spend it really well for the students, and I think that's a testament to the administrators, to the teachers, to the administration here and to the board for, for putting together a good, strong, solid budget. Um, thank you. I think it's a good budget, and I'm, I'm in favor of where we are at this point, with an additional $5,000.
With the addition of 5,000. Thank you for bringing that up, because we have not known about that, you know, really. And I agree with Mr. O'Shannon that, um, our administration and our central office staff have done an excellent job in preparing this budget. It is a very fair, for me, it is a very fair budget. It represents the needs of the students of Southington, and as members of the Board of Education, that is our job, to give the students of Southington the very best possible education that we can. And I look at this budget for regular education, I look at it for special education, um, and I think we've covered it all. And I, I hope that those officials in our community and the public that is listening understand what a difficult task it is to, um, put a dollar amount out there in our economy being what it is, and our tax base and so forth, but we have to do what we feel is best for the children of Southington. And that's all I have to say, yes.
So, so in terms of the book itself, if you don't have one of these books, please get one of these things, there's, a lot of the questions that people have are answered in it, that's why there weren't that many questions, we went through a lot of these things. All the questions that I had were answered in, in detail in this book, along with what each category stands for, so if you don't have one of these books, get one and read it, because the explanations.
No, it's online, so if you go to the Southington, if you go to the Southington Public School website, under the, um, business page, there's a link to all of the sections of this budget.
Each of the areas that had changes, or significant changes, or, or any sort of adjustments, you, you can see what it was, the dollar amount, and why, what those changes will actually be getting. And in a lot of cases, again, it's because the budget went up, the, or, sorry, the, the contract went up, the transportation cost went up, gas went up, but it's all explained in here, so it'll answer a lot of your questions.
Dave, did you have something?
Yes, I would like to go back to page 27, um, to accounts 42250 and 42300, back to the consumable workbooks. And I do want to thank Mr. Medancy for giving me a thorough explanation of the workbooks. Um, I just have one more question. What would be the alternative for workbooks?
That's a difficult question, depending on the workbook, because some of them are copyright protected, so you can't just go to a computer and print off the worksheets that would be in the book, um, or there would be, it'd be a matter of device access, and so in cases like our elementary schools where we don't have a one-to-one device program, the students that would be using those consumable workbooks wouldn't have access to print material. Therefore, the teacher then, who can't print off the copyrighted material, now has to find a similar resource that may not be vetted and curated and aligned with our curriculum, and has to, not only do they have to find it, they have to print it in mass quantities and bring it to students. So it, I don't know that there is, uh, you know, an, an effective alternative, especially for the elementary workbooks. Uh, middle school and high school, you run into a similar situation, because if you don't have the workbook, then you have to purchase the e-license to be able to access the online version of the workbook.
It was very expensive, that's how we.
Which is, yeah, there's a, there's a cost associated with that, that wouldn't be resulted in a savings. So it's kind of a, the publishers know, they got you. The only place where there's an opportunity for savings is the open source material, and that's where we talked about, that's where we're actually trying to go with math. But even with the math, you still need to have print material for the students, so there is just printing costs associated with that. So as much as they call them workbooks, it's really printing of curated published materials.
I could see, um, supporting it for this budget, but maybe this is something that the curriculum committee could look, work into. I know two of the members are not here today, um, but maybe the curriculum committee can look and, um, investigate some type of alternative and come up and make an adjustment to the curriculum, because $75,000 for workbooks is expensive. So hopefully that's something that the curriculum committee, that would be interested in doing.
But Dave, we have looked at that, when we, when we looked at these consumable, because I was on curriculum, the alternatives were much more expensive. And the, the children need the workbooks to go along with the lessons, and they were so well done. And I, truthfully, you can help me see if I don't remember that we had any other alternatives.
No, that's what I was saying.
Because the e-license was so expensive.
Yeah, it's a difficult, well, a lot of the times, there, it's, it's bundled, it's bundled too, you can't just get one thing, so you can't get just the e-license, because if you, it's like your cable bill, if you cancel your private phone, they're still going to jack up the price of your internet and cable so that you're paying about the same price, you know, because you can't, well, now you're à la carting it versus the bundle. And so there's really, we have, there's, the curriculum and instruction committee has, every time we bring anything forward, they ask all of these same questions, you know, is this, is this the most cost-effective alternative, is there another way to do this? And as I had shared with the math consumables, we looked for an alternative, and we had one. Mrs. Oppone had done a great job surveying teachers to see the level and use or need for both of them, since, since there was some redundancy between them. We ordered the bundle and gave the teachers only the workbook that they, you know, preferred to use that aligned with the curriculum, and then the publisher turned around and did away with the two bundle and made it one, and got their money back, so, because they saw what districts were doing. I know you.
You know, oh, you know, and as you spend another 20 years on the board, you'll, you'll probably get a better understanding, if you're almost that, that long, to, to really get the feel of what education really is, not being a teacher. But education is a business, and, and it's a tough business. And, and the people that support it are out there to make a buck. It's all about the money.
It is.
They, they supply a product and we buy it. We tailor the instruction around the products that are out there, and every time you come up with, like Mr. Medancy says, you know, you, you change something so that you save some money, what they do is they alter the cost, so the cost never changes.
Yeah.
So there is no savings. You may streamline a product, you may make it easier for teachers to, you know, to present the, present the curriculum to the student, but the bottom line is, there's no, there's no cost savings.
One final risk, if you don't order a consistent set of, of print materials, then you have inconsistency. Right? And so one of the things that we want to, to make sure that our parents are comfortable with is that the students are getting a guaranteed viable curriculum, that's, and the written and taught curriculum is aligned, that's the term we use with our administrators. There's not a guarantee that the written and the taught curriculum is aligned, if teachers have to use their own means to find online resources to deliver that instruction, you know, but now it'll, it's left to each teacher's discretion, and you do not, no longer have a curated set of curriculum materials then at that point as well, that's been vetted and approved by the board. And so there's also that, that risk in terms of the, the quality outcomes for students. So while there may be a cost savings, if you were to, you know, try and find an innovative approach, the risk is the outcome for students as well.
I just had one comment, you know, again, like, to, to continue to beat a dead horse, you know, what, what is presented in this budget, um, I, I agree with, you know, as a board member, as what my expectation of the town that I grew up in, you know, being a product of, of this system, continuing to sort of maintain. Um, I guess, you know, where I sort of challenged Dave and Zaya is, again, like the CNC machining and things like that, it's, it's really neat, it's cool, but I'll tell you what, there's plenty of stuff in our backyard, you know, we're talking about painting, $25 to $35 an hour if you have your own business. And, you know, I don't know what a CNC machinist makes, but I know it's probably maybe on the upper end of that. So, you know, again, like, I, I think it's, it's all about, as we continue to change how we deliver education, you know, it's, I guess empowering teachers, empowering community members, instead of a whole bus of kids going to Pratt and Whitney to see big fancy machines, you know, hey, Saturday, this particular business in town, they said that if you'd like to come shadow, you could come shadow, at a restaurant, at a painting company, you know, again, like, I, I think if, if we bring it down to the more, and I, I hate the term, but I don't know what else to call it, but like the organic level of, you know, the small town, and, you know, giving kids, because, again, like, I started mowing lawns, I'm not going to be mowing lawns when I'm 45 or 50, you know, there needs to be somebody to take that over. Or, you know, again, as a nurse, I'm hard on my body, you know, I'd like to retire at 65, you know, and have somebody to sort of, sort of take that over. I think it's a matter of getting creative in what we, what we have, to, to sort of, I guess, do that without having to spend extra money, but then, you know, again, getting our community partners to, to sort of help with that undertaking. So, you know, again, just a little bit of a rant, but, but again, I, I just, every time we talk about the, the fancy jobs, we, we sometimes forget about the, the jobs that actually get the work done, and, you know, the plumber, the electrician, the painter, the roofer, you know, all jobs that everybody hates and everybody doesn't want to do, um, you know, but, but they're there.
Well, that, that's the point. We've, uh, you know, the, the committee that I'm on, okay, and it involves a fair amount of teachers, tech ed teachers, uh, we got business owners that are part of this committee, consultants. Today we had the representative from Punxsus, uh, who's heading up the program, uh, in Connecticut, which is a high-tech state, is, is hurting badly because they don't have enough talented people to keep the thing up. I mean, there's, there's so many job openings, but nobody's qualified for those jobs. And it's, and it's not for lack of interest, it's lack of knowledge that these people have.
Lack of knowledge, lack of able to afford the state?
So that, so that the intent of the committee is to get the young folks, you know, the, the students, we've been talking with middle school students, get their interest now so that when they get to high school, they have a better idea as to the direction that they, they'd like to take. To, to really get them really involved is to bring them to these different places, to see what it really looks like. You could talk to them, you could show them a picture, but to see it actually, you know, making chips, producing a part, seeing something assembled, seeing a screw machine take a piece of material in one end and a finished product out of the other, I mean, those types of things really instill interest, not in every student, okay, but if you got 40 students that go, and you can get five or six that want to take that career path, okay, I think it's a home run. Because right now, we're not getting anybody.
We can't find them, you just can't find them. And I think when you, so is it at the high end, a CNC operator, it can be anywhere between $30 and $65 an hour.
Correct.
Right.
So that's, that's a pretty good living to make. You need the training, you need to.
And a point that was made today is the pre-education to the, for, before those trips, so the kids know what to expect when they get there, so what they see resonates with them, and then the follow-up debrief with the students after they go to help them understand that. But if we offer those trips as a, you know, we're going here and sign up if you're interested, not necessarily having to bring every kid, because maybe not every kid wants that, and you have 40 kids that go, and 20 of them go into a career similar, and you save each of those parents $200,000 in college tuition, I think the town of Southington would be grateful to us for what we saved them.
So Terry and I are on the, on the Business Advisory Committee, and so to your point, Joe, we have a lot of community involvement in that group, where the students that are getting involved in business activities are, they are being placed here in town to the different businesses. Actually, I know, I know one of the ladies that started that program, know her well.
I do too.
My mother. So, so, but years ago, and, and that, that has continued on over and over the years, that these kids, and, and it's a great interaction between the, the teachers, the students, and, and the community coming in. But I think in terms of something like this, we don't. But I think in terms of something like this, we don't have as much of those types of things in the community where we have an opportunity to send kids to a place like that, whereas if you can go to EDAC, and you could go to, up to Pratt, you can come to my place or other places, we're not around here, we're kind of far, far away. To get a couple, you know, 100 kids, 50 kids, to start that process, I think it's a great way for them, in their mind, early on in their, their high school career, to decide where they want to go, because at that point, you don't really necessarily know, this is going to help you make some decisions.
All right, I think that concludes our workshop. I would like to remind my fellow board members that today was the day that you were supposed to notify me of any committees or negotiations that you would like to be on, and since I...
Already? Came that quick?
If you were paying attention.
Came that quick?
If you were paying attention. So since I only heard from a few people, I am going to do the assignment of who's going to be on what, okay?
If I can, I don't want to take any thunder from what you're about to say, but I'll say it anyway, to remind everybody, 6:15 on Thursday, next, next Thursday.
Oh, our picture.
And have your lipstick ready, yes.
So we have to comb our hair, wash our face, and look to the.
And have lipstick.
Ah, you're fine, you're good.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Thank you.
Thank you.